The council will be called on at the appropriate time to make your comments. And if there are any students in attendance and we aren't done by nine o'clock, we'll take a short break and sign your forms so you can go home. At this time, I'll have the clerk call the roll. And I understand that Councilmember Martinez is joining us remotely.
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor Swartz. Councilmember Lombardi?
Present.
Councilmember Fancher?
Present.
Councilmember Myers?
Present.
Councilmember Scog?
Present.
Councilmember Martinez?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Madewell?
Present.
And Mayor Swartz?
Present.
Okay, at this time, we will... Okay, at this time, I would take a motion to approve the agenda. Does any council member wish to move a consent agenda item to a business item for individual discussion and vote or make other modifications to tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, I would take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Closed. Motion passes. Okay, at this time, we will have citizen communication. The council invites citizen comments to hear from the public on matters before the council or relevant to the council's business. The council values free expression of all points of view as an important democratic value in this community. Each speaker is allowed a maximum of five minutes. If others have already expressed their views, you may simply indicate that you agree with the previous speaker. The council expects respect for those who have positions with which one may disagree, so debate or interactive discussions are strictly prohibited. Please refrain from applause after each speaker. Only address your comments to the council and not to staff or audience. Council may request staff to research comments received for potential future action. Please take private conversations outside. When you are called to speak, please begin with stating your name and city of residence for the record. And first up, we have Cedric Eklund.
Hello, my name is Cedric Eklund. I'm from Moses Lake. I'm here representing Amazing Food Trucks again, and I wanted to talk about the benefit of having multiple food trucks and having the location that we've picked out for Moses Lake and the community. One of our goals is not just to build our community with having local businesses and some of our local food trucks kind of be able to showcase what they have on a location where they're not having to pay as much for the setup, but also for them to be able to just kind of get going and start up. We also would like to do events where we're having like cornhole or like volleyball or other things during the summer so we can get the community involved. And then just being right off of I-90, we think that we can attract a lot of people who are traveling to kind of stop by and come into Moses. And so when thinking about the current plan and certain regulations, I just would like to have you guys keep that in mind and some of the benefits that could come from the food trucks and the business opportunities there. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, moving on. Lisa, I assume this is you?
Yes.
Lisa DeLuigi?
Sorry, did I just put my first name on?
You certainly did.
But there, part about the...
All right. That's how I knew it was you.
If it pleases the council, Alicia DeLuigi, Lisa from Moses Lake. I just... If it's okay with you, Dustin, can I just go ahead and email you with regards to the upcoming proclamation, the kindness proclamation, that the governor already signed? It's actually a national thing, and it's done on an annual basis, kind of like the Mexican Heritage Month, that every year it gets renewed. And I just would like to see our city participate in it, and if not, the world's not going to end. This is a demonstration of you guys' character. But it's a kindness proclamation recognizing Random Mexican Kindness Day and Random Mexican Kindness Week in February. And that's something that I like to gift myself as a birthday present. It's not a birthday present like... My name's not in it. It would be inappropriate for my name to be disclosed in it. It's just something that I do, you know, as a birthday present to myself in encouraging others to share in kindness. So if that's okay with you, I'll just go ahead and email. Yeah? Perfect?
You can certainly email me that, yes.
Okey-dokey. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have Amy DeLuigi.
Amy DeLuigi, I reside in Moses Lake, Washington. The reason why I'm back up addressing council again is I have taken some affirmative action as of last city council meeting, and I attempted to reach out to the city attorney in regards to addressing a couple different things. So one thing we were talking about is making a plan. Unfortunately, I can't make a plan because a few things were supposed to be addressed in regards to the linguistics of 5.07 and the neighboring drive-through coffee stand. So I reached out to the city attorney, and once again, I told you last time I'm being completely disregarded. I was disregarded again. I asked for a meeting to be able to go over the types of things that she requested that I put in writing for observation, to be able to motion forward, to be able to create a plan on my lot. However, she said that she is refusing to speak to myself, and she would only speak to my attorney. My attorney is $350 an hour. I don't understand why I am being discriminated against and disregarded. I know the code better than my attorney knows the code. I thought it was appropriate to attempt to reach out to these channels so that way we can come to a mutual understanding. However, I have been denied. My attorney that I do have is because I am a cannabis business owner. I don't know anybody who is in the cannabis industry that doesn't have a federal attorney on their side. So A, I have him for business, and B, I have him in regards to an upcoming RICO racketeering defamation case that is going to involve about six agencies statewide. What I did notice is that the city attorney, one person that is currently under investigation by the federal government, is being CC'd on those emails. So my attorney actually pointed that out, and it's highly alarming. I don't understand why I can't have a direct conversation about the code and the things that were asked of me. So at this point, I feel like it's complete discrimination. I have reached out to the Department of Justice because I've been working with the Department of Justice in regards to Title III violations in the city of Moses Lake, since there are quite a few of them. We're now motioning forward to Title II in regards to discrimination. Unfortunately, the city of Moses Lake has given me no other option but to motion forward. I personally feel like I'm being discriminated against. I have no option at this point. Who do I go to, you guys? Who do I talk to? Peterson told me to write something up for Kennison. That was probably over a month and a half ago that that was submitted, where I carefully went through the Washington State Food Code. I carefully identified what was a food versus a non-food establishment. I also identified with the FD or FF or FDA and as well as Grand County Health Department of what would be considered an entryway or a non-entryway, and it's not being addressed. And right now, they're telling me the only way I can address this is with an attorney. I have it all in writing. I believe that I emailed every single one of you. I'm also willing to sit down and show you guys the 170 pages of RICO racketeering and conspiracy that was against me, that was initiated in March from a trumped-up video where law enforcement was manipulated into believing that something that was absolute, which wasn't absolute, based off of altering a video. And one of those people who gave statement against me is being CC'd in every single one of our city attorney's emails currently.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I could respond to just one item that Ms. DeLuigi raised. So yes, I did receive an email from her in which she indicated she was represented by council and provided documents that she and her council purportedly prepared. The Washington State Supreme Court adopted a set of rules of ethics that are binding on all attorneys who are admitted to practice in the state of Washington. I'd like to read to you RPC 4.2 for the record. Communication with person represented by a lawyer. In representing a client, a lawyer shall not communicate about the subject of representation with a person the lawyer knows to be represented by a lawyer, another lawyer in the matter, unless the lawyer has the consent of the other lawyer or is authorized to do so by law or court order. I did respond to Ms. DeLuigi and offered happily to converse directly with her attorney. She is not willing to provide the contact information to her attorney, so I'm at a standstill. I just wanted you to be aware, I'm not ignoring Ms. DeLuigi. I provided the proper response as I'm allowed to do under my rules of ethics.
Okay, thank you for the context. All right, thank you.
May I say something as well?
Sure.
Okay. I was actually advised by Ms. Kennison. I could have done that all by myself because I understood Washington State Food Code. Ms. Peterson and Ms. Kennison, once I mentioned having my attorney overlook it, asked for my attorney's participation. So why would they entrap me into asking for an attorney's participation, knowing that if I motion forward based off of their request, that I would be disallowed the ability to stand tall like a full-grown woman and communicate 5.07, which is the food code, as well as a Washington State Food Code that is a totality of Washington State? It was a request by them to do so. My attorney doesn't represent me in this matter. What my attorney is representing me in is a RICO racketeering matter, and a person that is a portion of that is being CC'd on all of Ms. Kennison's emails. So that is not adequate. And if that were the case, I should have been warned. If you take our advice and motion forward and utilize an attorney to be able to provide the definition that they could not do on their own accord, that should have been relayed to myself.
Okay. Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and we do have one more remote speaker. I understand there's Foster Parent Recruiter Gabriela Mendez. Are you on remotely, Gabriela? Okay, so in this case, do we just... If she gets on later, can we take her comments or... Okay. All right, perfect. We will go ahead and move on then to the mayor's report. Take it away, Kevin.
So I have a few things, very short. The first thing is just don't forget that we have a water study session. Our third one will be on February the 6th from 11:30 to 1:00. That's a little bit shorter, but we're going to talk about some issues that we talked about in session two, so just be prepared for that. We will, again, provide lunch that day. Water funding update. Our contractor that we use, Elevate, yesterday submitted two grants to the state of Washington, each for $2 million, to help with the design of our future water, hopefully our 100-year fix for our water problem. And so that has been submitted. He also has reached out to Representative Dan Newhouse's campaign. They are willing to run a funding package for the city, I believe for another $4 million, again, for the design phase, and is... They're now soliciting support from Senator Murray and Senator Cantwell to back Representative Newhouse, Congressman Newhouse's plan. So... And then the last thing, just for an update. Madeline, the fire chief, and I met with our contractor on the fire districting issue. We are just about dialed in. We had a meeting a couple weeks ago looking at his spreadsheet. He... We needed... Brett saw that there were some numbers in there that weren't... There were not some numbers in there that needed to be in there. Those numbers, I believe, have been provided out, so we'll probably meet in the next week with him again to finalize his spreadsheet. Once that is done, then we will grab the small committee of council members together, and we will move forward with that. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that that is getting close to being done on the consultant's side, and then we'll start having internal meetings with the council committee. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Kevin. Sorry, I got a little bit out of order there. I do not have a mayor's report this evening. I've got other stuff I got to do. Also, does council wish to have any business brought to a future meeting? Okay, seeing as there is none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items listed are considered to be routine, and will be enacted by one motion. And we'll accept that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Closed. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to old business. We also have no old business scheduled. So moving on to new business. Item number two is the Water Smart Grant Resolution, which will be presented by Mr. Baltzel.
Actually, Brian is not here, so Lee is going to fill in for him.
I kind of noticed that something was going on with that.
So Lee will take charge of this one?
Ms. Ramsey, please.
Actually, we brought Chad from the Water Department to discuss the Water Smart Grant tonight, so we're going to put Chad on the podium, if you'll welcome him.
Okay.
Because he's smart on water.
We're in the process of applying for a Water Smart Grant to finish the AMR meter endpoint project. So that will allow us to get the meters upgraded by 2027, and that will give every customer the ability to see their usage. So the grant is... So the total cost of the project is going to be $2 million to finish the project. The grant is 50/50 match, so Water Smart would pay a million, and the city would pay a million.
I'm not being shy about my feelings on it. I think the thought of keeping track of my water moment by moment is of no interest to me. Okay, that's thing number one. Thing number two, that water conservation is significant in Moses Lake right now. I would be interested to know that how sure are we of getting a $1 million grant to start this project? I mean, is it chances that we would put $1 million and come up $1 million short and not get a grant? So we are already in the process of... We have already started this implementation. So we spent $400,000 in 2023. We're spending another $500,000 in 2024. And so to get this project finished in a timely manner, to give... So AWWA had... American Water Works Association has done several studies, and by just giving the customer a portal to see their usage and notification of leaks, you save right off the bat 2% to 10% savings in water usage. That is significant. Even if we're at 2% savings for the entire system, that is a significant savings to allow us to continue to add homes.
Does the 400 and the 500 count as part of our $1 million?
No, it does not. So we did not qualify for Water Smart Grant until this year. So the $900,000 that we've already spent is money that we've spent. Going forward, this will allow us to basically shorten the implementation timeframe in half. You know, we would be looking at 29 or 30 before we're fully implemented.
So when it's all done, we'll have approached $3 million?
Yes. With the cost of... The rising cost of inflation on products, it has doubled since we started this in 2022, '21.
Could we estimate a value of what 2% of our water usage is in dollars?
I don't have that figure right now, but it's significant, you know?
I mean, is it $3 million significant?
So the system that we have now is beyond its life, so it has to be replaced. Batteries are not... They're all battery-operated things, and they are failing at an unprecedented rate right now.
The batteries are?
The batteries are. So we have several hundred right now of the old system that are failed, which means that a meter reader has to go every month and read that meter visually.
What powers the new system?
Their batteries. So they are on a fixed schedule. The old equipment was... We were not happy with their stated 20-year lifespan. We were not getting 20 years out of them.
What do we anticipate of the new system?
Even if we get 10 years is good. We're hoping for more. Right off the bat, we have 1,000... We have 900 in the ground now. We are... We're having a failure rate of less than 1%. They have been sent back, and no questions asked, new ones brought in. The old system that we're on, the old drive-by system, we were getting a credit towards new at, you know, 40% to 60%, depending on how old they were. So...
So the other thing, I mean, I was going to make a comment. So I believe with the new system, we don't... They don't... We don't need a meter reader, right?
No, they will no longer be driving the routes weekly.
And then also, I think the other big issue is not only can the homeowner monitor it, but you guys will have real-time monitoring?
Yes.
In the case of an over-usage or leak?
Correct.
Like, I mean, right now, the only way on the old system, if there's a leak going on, that's going to not know till you read the meter on the manual...
Right. So the reads currently, once a month, we get a read, right? So we're a month behind on high usage. So if my residence is usually, let's say, 1,000 cubic feet a month, and it comes back at 5,000 cubic feet, they will send a meter reader out to reread the register to make sure that that was a good read. And if it was a good read, then they will notify me of high usage.
And now you... When you start seeing the high usage, I mean, you can see it much quicker?
You can see it...
With the new meters?
You can see... So the new system, you can set... Each citizen can set their own leak rate from a half a gallon a minute up to five gallons a minute. And then you can also set the time to 24 hours to, I think it's 96 hours. So if you were ultra-conservative and you wanted a half a gallon an hour or a half a gallon a minute and within 24 hours, if your meter registered a half a gallon a minute for a 24-hour period, it would notify you that that's a leak.
I guess what I'm saying is, is right now, I mean, I know, like, we have, in my business, either property management or even some other businesses. Right now, you guys sometimes will reach out to either our property management company and say, "Hey, I think your people are... Have got a problem." They're... I mean, the owner sometimes... Or the tenant sometimes even just pays the bill, you know? But you will notify them. I mean, what is gonna... I mean, they're not going to probably set their portal up to do that, but are you guys going to have some triggers to... Do you have some triggers, real-time triggers, to say, "Hey, these guys, they've used, you know, 200 gallons a day for the last 10 days, and now it's 500"?
We can set triggers on every service in the system ourselves, if we so choose. We can set it at a half a gallon a minute for 24 hours, and if that was, you know... We probably won't get there right off the bat, but we would get like maybe two gallons, three gallons, somewhere in there. Because we don't necessarily know everybody's usage patterns, right? So you don't want to set it up and have 3,000... We have 10,000 services. You don't want 3,000 emails to look at...
My thought is, it happened to me in my office, where... And it was wonderful that they found out. Absolutely. We had one that was stuck open in the winter, basically froze open, and we were running water constantly. And fortunately, your guys were like, caught it and said, "Hey, you got a problem." And we had to dig... We did some digging, and boom, there was a valve open on the system, and it shouldn't have been... It was failing. So...
Don?
Did Councilmember Martinez have a question?
Oh, sorry, she didn't hit the button. Thank you, Don. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you, Don, for noticing my hand was raised. Although I think Chad has already answered my questions, my understanding is that we need to replace these meters anyway, and this grant would help us to replace them sooner in somebody else's paying for half of them. I... Considering our push to try and get our citizens to conserve water more, I think this would be just another good tool to have, because in the people that I've talked to, you know, they are keeping an eye on their water usage, maybe changing their landscaping or just doing away with their yard, period. So there is a movement. What we've been working on, people are listening and trying their best to do what they can, and I see this as just another way to assist our citizens to help conserve water. Thank you for finding this grant that we might be eligible for. Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. I'm going to go ahead and go with Victor.
Okay. Chad, thanks for coming. You and I had an interesting conversation yesterday, and I think what needs a little more explanation about the system for the public is that, to a certain degree, this revolutionizes how we look at water. It really does. For a city, and like other cities, that suffers some dated deprivation as we kind of crawl into the 2020s, what this does, it will eventually end the tier system, which is based on... It's a pain model. This system will allow... I've looked at the software. I compared it to the IBM model. I compared it to Eaton. It will allow theoretically, as long as the software that we're also getting with it, correct? It will allow a homeowner to customize the amount of water that they want to use and what they want to use... It will allow a homeowner to customize the amount of water that they want to use and what they want to pay for. Because right now, people that, when they start watering their lawns, they really don't have an idea how much it's going to cost. And so this way, they can have a number in their head that they say, "Okay, I only want to spend X." Well, after going through one year of that with their square footage of their lot, they can say, "Okay, well, I don't, I don't have enough water at this price range to water all this lawn." So maybe they, on their own, redesign their lot. And I think, to me, that's a better way of getting the public to conserve water than it is doing it with a pain model. The other thing that's really great about this is, Mark was focusing on that, is the alert system. I mean, this, that's no different than what we have right now with our credit cards, where if someone's using a credit card, it notifies you right away of a charge. And then you can dispute it and kind of halt the fraud that takes place. So that's another really good benefit. The other thing is that it can be used by builders. And so if we are having new developments taking place, the city can help builders customize the amount of grass and so forth of the water usage, because now we'll have real data and it'll be very, very accurate. So I think from that standpoint, that, that's a big, a big win. And I think it's also particularly if we're looking at affordable housing or middle housing, this also will give us a data point to work off of. So it's not cheap, I get it. I do have some questions on the Orion points, which reads, which sends the data. You were saying that it's 91 cents per month? Is that correct?
Yes.
Now, is that for the servicing of the Orion point? Or is that for the transferring of the data?
So that's the cloud, that's using the cellular cloud to, to collect the data and then us to review it?
Okay.
You know?
So that is a cost. We look at, if we had 11,000 homes, you know, we're looking at 10,000 a month, times 12, it's $120,000 a year.
Right. Yeah, that, that is the cost.
Right.
Roughly. The cost now is we're paying two full-time meter readers to do nothing but collect reads, drive-bys and do re-reads. So this will allow them to transition to more of a support role with keeping the system going. As far as, you know, let's say we're on a five-year or a 10-years cycle of replacement, that's what they would be doing.
Right.
You know?
And I had written down here, saving of meter readers, but I just wanted the public to see exactly, we're paying for this, but we're saving in this.
Yes.
And the, the numbers hourly are probably way past that. I, I don't know, I don't have them, but.
Yeah, two, two employees, 48, 48, 40 hours a week. That, that doesn't include the trucks, the, the reading equipment that we have now that is always going through software updates. And just like a computer, you know, it won't last forever, you need to update it. We've gone through several of those since the inception of this AMR system.
Okay. Now, I, I, I'm obviously, I think it's a great system. I think it's something that the more data we have collectively, not so much individually, and that's something that, once this is in full implementation in 2027, if not sooner, we're going to have to have something in there that says this data is protected and that dubious forces around us don't get, get their hands on it.
Mr. Scog.
I think there's a lot of things that, that occur that makes our world better and safer. One of my pet peeves is arc fault breakers and Dustin will, Dustin will describe about that. You know, $2,000 later on my panels, I'm feeling much better when I sleep at night. So having said that, I think technology is good, but helps me make a decision is when we talk about a $3 million project, a million grant potentially, what helps me make a decision is when we say, if we can save 2% water, that's going to cost us to do, to save this much, the whole program and say, we spend this, we save this. I think we're going to be asked over the next few years to make some really, really smart decisions about what do we do about water? And I think, I think the due diligence on our part is to make sure that we get the absolute biggest bang for the buck. And, and as that goes on, that, I think that's what we have to do. And, and that's part of what goes through my head is, is this the best expenditure of money that's going to get us the most water or the, or, you know, fill in the blank, the most cost-effective? And it's not that I don't think it's good, or not that I don't think it's efficient or, or makes things better. It, it does, but is that, is that the best better that we can get for that dollar? That's where I look at that.
Okay. I know, I think Deanna had another question, but I'm gonna, Deanna, I'm gonna go to Don first and then I'll take, take your comments.
I just want to address Councilmember Scog. I know you mentioned earlier in your presentation that this is going to help save the system capacity, because I know there's a couple zones that we are up at the ceiling for the, for those particular zones. If we have these 2% to 10% water savings that allows for new homes to come in and be developed, and I know we're seeing some pretty crazy growth in housing. And if we can, in a faster fix, by 2027, have an additional capacity to provide these houses, that, that's going to be money in our pocket, not just savings on water. So there, there's that portion of it too.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. I, I'll give up my time back. Don basically covered it. You know, we're, we're spending money, we're saving money and potentially increasing our growth. Because right now, we're, we're kind of limiting where we'll grow because of lack of water. So any part that, and I'm pretty certain that our goal is to try and help Moses Lake grow in the right way. And this would potentially help with that. So I appreciate Chad, your time and would like to move forward in support of this.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I've got a few comments. I mean, it's concerning to me that Don's point has validity here, that, you know, we're, we're squeezing every last drop, so to speak, out of some of these zones. And so, you know, I keep that in mind. But with that data then, and what we find from it, we may be asking the citizens to make some sacrifices in all of this, you know? And I mean, I would be frank, in, in our conversation tonight, I didn't hear anything about the fate of those two meter readers, for instance. So, you know, I think we all need to be mindful that we're making sacrifices here. And so I would hope that the man-hours that are spent currently on reading meters, you know, we realize a true savings in that. So if those employees are still employed by the city of Moses Lake, they should be employed doing something completely different that's equally, if not more constructive. So I would like to see a report on that at some point, see where those efforts are going now that we've done this. The city needs to take some sacrifices as well or become more efficient, if we are all going to. Anyway, at this point, if we have no further discussion, I'll go ahead and take a motion. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Lombardi.
When I was reading the literature on this, it said also that, that it's possible for the meters to read the quality of the water?
Yes, that, there is a possibility. That is really not where we're looking at going. Our water is, our, our water is really consistent, the deep water. Once we move to a treatment plant, a surface water treatment plant, it will be just as consistent. So there's really not a need for that. You know, we will be doing sampling of the system routinely anyway. And so that's just an added cost with no real benefit.
I just wanted to confirm if that was true.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion if there is one.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. The next order of business we have is administrative reports.
Thank you, Mayor, but I don't believe we have any this evening.
Well, that's disappointing. You guys showed up here for nothing, huh? It's always lovely to see you, however, thanks for being here. Moving on then, we'll go ahead and have council committee reports. And I'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Martinez, who's joining us remotely.
The only thing I have to offer is the Watershed Council. They're moving ahead with the Yedeli play, which is to help teach people about where our water, what our water, excuse me, water cycle is. And hopefully start teaching kids at a younger age to conserve water. Those plays, there'll be one at each middle school. And then it sounds, and they're moving forward with spraying the clay on the lake. There'll be a lot of advertisement, just so people are aware of what's going on to try and improve the health of the lake. And one more project that might be coming up has, has to do with septic systems in two parts of Moses Lake that they want to really focus on and try and, there might potentially be some money that homeowners will be able to access to help with any improvements on their septic systems. So that was just kind of touching on that potential program. And if there's any further information on it, I'll share it at a later meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Myers?
Yes, just one quick thing. GTA bet, we have three new board members from Wilson Creek, Soap Lake, and Warden. We're looking at some bylaw changes, election of officers, stipend changes, attendance policies with Zoom meetings. We've had a lot of people opt to just attend via Zoom. And we haven't had very many in-person attendees and the, the meetings have gone kind of stale. So we're looking at some attendance policies to correct that. That was pretty much it. The Battery Electric Bus Project is still moving forward. Couple small little items and they should be up hopefully in the next month or two and, and running here in Moses Lake.
Great, thank you, Don. Councilmember Fancher?
Yeah, we, Community Development Public Works meeting today. We did talk overview of our first code stakeholder meeting. We had last, I don't know what day that was, Thursday. We had attendance of about 30 stakeholders, meaning developers, engineers, builders, landowners, consultants. I mean, it was a pretty good cross-reference of people to go over the first section and get their feedback. I, I guess we didn't really go over the whole section, but could start talking about feedback on what, what code items that they would like to see addressed or improvements. I thought it was very, very well-attended and a lot of good comments. So that's exciting to move forward. I think the good thing is, is the participation amount. We've heard in the past that the, the not having good participation, I think we gave the invitation out the Friday before and they, I think it was Wednesday, actually. And we had that many people, that'll tell you, one, a priority it is to see good updates to our code. So I'm excited. Out of that came some people that were willing to help on a more rapid basis, like every couple weeks, on working through this code. So we are looking forward to the, the challenge and the opportunity at the same time. That's it.
Great, thank you, Mark. Councilmember Lombardi?
Port of Moses Lake, we currently are sitting with 150 planes. They did hire a new interim manager and they have submitted their own TIF, their tax increment financing plan. I will be getting a copy of that and I'll provide an analysis for the next meeting, but it's very comparable to the 13 that have already been submitted to the state.
Great, thank you, Victor. And Councilmember Scog?
I have nothing to report.
Great, thank you. We appreciate that. Deputy Mayor Madewell?
I don't have anything at this time, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add a couple items that I was thinking about. Oh, I did attend the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Services meeting. I'll remind everyone, we had a small issue with the chiller down there for the ice rink, which is extremely terrible considering it's the middle of ice season. But thanks to Doug and his team, it sounds like they're moving forward with a really, really affordable solution, at least in my mind, and I do have some experience with those sorts of things. So that's very exciting. Also, at the Larson Rec Center, I believe Doug's looking into, and the, the name of the program escapes me at, at the moment, but to get senior citizens, so, silver something. Yes, silver something. Some, some benefits for, to utilize that facility there, which should provide quite an uptick in, in usage of that facility. So we're excited for that. That being said, I don't think we have anything else at this moment. The next regular council meeting is scheduled for the day before Valentine's Day, February 13th. And we will be, now be going into an executive session for 15 minutes to discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW 423110 subsection I. There will be no action to follow and the meeting will adjourn at 7:21 PM.